Good evening, everyone. It is 7:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll begin with invocation by Pastor Brent Montgomery, Valley Christian Church. Brent, if you'd be so kind.
So we don't look at the troubles we can see now, rather we fix our gaze on things that cannot be seen. But the things we see now will soon be gone, but the things we cannot see will last forever. Let's pray. Father, I discharge those in this room that they would look towards the future, what's best for our community, and do what's right. And, Father, give them the wisdom and strength to carry out this task. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Our pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Missley?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Carmen?
Here.
Maybach?
Here.
Here. Hey, current copy of open meetings act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. I would like to draw you, if you haven't gotten a copy of the agenda, you can pick one up over here by the door as you come in, right to the right, if you'd like to have a copy of it. But what I would like to do is draw your attention to the meeting procedures. The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please state your name and address, and limit remarks to three minutes or less. Out of respect to city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor, and an individual in violation will be declared out of order. So we'll begin with the consent agenda. Item, all matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council by routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. All right. Item number one is approved minutes of regular meeting on September 4th and special meeting on September 6th of 2018. Item number two, sent application of Mid Plains Food and Lodging, Inc., Holiday Inn Express, North Platt, for a Class C liquor license. That's beer, wine, and distilled spirits, on and off sale, and catering license located at 300 Holiday Frontage Road to the Liquor Commission with no recommendation. Item number three, approved application by the Switchyard Grill and Pub, Inc., for a special designated license on October 5th, 2018, from 4:30 PM to 8:00 PM at the Carhartt Lumber, 221 West Front Street, for business after hours. And item number four, accept the report for the certification administrator, Scott Moses, for those volunteer firefighters qualifying for the 2017-2018 North Platt Volunteer Firefighter Service Award Program, and authorize incentive funds, $10,800, to be held in trust by First National Bank of North Platt.
Move to approve items 1 through 4 of the consent agenda.
Okay. Regular agenda. Item number five is second reading and action of adopt ordinance number 3999 to rezone certain lands from a R1 dwelling district to a R2 dwelling district located at 3601 West Philip Avenue and 802 through 820 Dixie Avenue. The property is described as Gosnell Estates, first replat of Block 3, Gosnell's Estates' first subdivision, North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Yes, please.
An ordinance of the city of North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning land situated in North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska, as follows. Res zoning from R1 dwelling district to R2 dwelling district, Gosnell Estates, first replat of Block 3, Gosnell Estates' first subdivision, North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
I would move that we waive the three required readings for ordinance number 3999 to rezone certain lands from an R1 dwelling district to an R2 dwelling district located at 3601 West Philip Avenue and 802 to 820 Dixie Avenue. Property is described as Gosnell Estates, first replat of Block 3, Gosnell's Estates' first subdivision, North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before we vote on this, there's a young lady back here would like to speak, I believe.
My name is Jane Ann Allen.
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
My name is Jane Ann Allen, and I do not approve of this because you're using TIF money, and the people will move in and not pay taxes for 15 years, overwhelm Eisenhower School District, and the land was declared as, I don't know-
Jane, Jane, we're not to that point yet.
Okay, well, I'm still mad about it, so.
Okay.
Put me down as mad.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get her address?
Ma'am, Jane, what was your, ma'am?
Jane Ann Allen, 814 Stewart Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did I see another hand back here? Yes, sir.
What's the motion? This is to suspend the-
Oh, yeah.
Suspended reading.
This is to suspend the readings. Can we wait just a few minutes?
Right.
This is to suspend the readings.
To make it a vote on up or down tonight.
Have a seat.
Have a seat, please.
Why are we waiting the three?
Sir, would you have a seat, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Why did you want to?
Well, with the planning commission meeting next Tuesday, in order to look if this was approved, at the next, would be the plating of it and all of that stuff, it seemed like we should probably just go ahead and put it up or down tonight, I thought.
I think, you can hear it in the audience, I think it's a serious enough issue that I think we ought to have three readings on this.
Right. Yes, sir.
I agree with Jim. There's too much interest in this not to have three readings on it.
That's fine, I'm willing to pull it. I was just trying to, with the planning commission meeting, possibly next week, and pull the motion. Make a motion to, make a motion to adopt on second reading, ordinance number 3999 to rezone certain lands from an R1 dwelling district to an R2 dwelling district located at 3601 West Philip Avenue and 802 to 820 Dixie Avenue. Property is described as Gosnell Estates, first replat of Block 3, Gosnell's Estates' first subdivision, North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Now, request-
This is the actual-
The actual item.
Second reading.
So how did it feel till three minutes, all the time? Oh, on the reading. How did that go? On the second? Oh, okay. Okay, so now we're talking about-
Second item.
Right. Okay, now we're on. Now, I want you to understand, this really isn't a public hearing, but I do want to listen to what you have to say. So please be respectful to what other people have to say. I don't want you all hollering and screaming back there when somebody up here is talking. And so be respectful, and I ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes. And I'm going to keep track, because it got out of hand a couple of weeks ago, so please be respectful of everybody in this room. If you want to talk, I want to hear what you have to say. So, that being said, who would like to go? Does anyone want to talk? And please keep it to the item that we're going to be voting on. Let's change it from R1 to R2.
My name's Tom Pfeifer. I live at 18, or 813 Dixie Avenue in North Platt. And I just, I talked to a few of you guys in the last couple of weeks, and there's a general idea that, that we don't want anything built there. We want a left. We want, we want something built there. We want houses. We know North Platt needs houses. We want it developed. We wanted it developed when the church was going to develop it. With that said, we all want it developed. But we don't want the development to be dropped, the zoning from R1 to R2. The reason behind that is the smaller lots, the smaller houses, they don't aesthetically fit in the neighborhood. They just don't look the same. Fifty years from now, if you drive down Phillips Street, you don't want somebody going, "Well, what happened here? How come these are all small lots, small homes? You've got R1 all around it. Why do it?" And then, at the meeting, and the telegraph reported on this, that Ms. Clark said that R1 development can be as large as 9,000 square feet, and typically average 7,500 square feet. R2 family, single-family lots, smaller, as small as 5,000 square feet, the project would be six, average 6,000 square feet. So, I got on the city website, and I went on the east side, which is Clearwater, the north side, Edna, Dixie, Tyler. Took, found the two smallest lots in each street, and the one largest, to compare them with what Ms. Clark said, and with what we're being told the R2 is going to be.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. They, they average over 10,000, 11,000 square feet, the small lots. The large lots are 21,000, 17,900. These are, these are in direct conflict with what was reported in the paper, what Ms. Clark reported. This is our, our neighborhood, the size of our neighborhood. So if you drop the zoning to R2, it creates an entire different type of neighborhood.
Time, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, for opening this up. I didn't get a chance to speak a couple of weeks ago. Clarion Eikoff, 8909 South Buffalo, North Platt. And I also am the Economic Development Chair Committee for Chamber DevCo, and so I wear a couple of hats. And I would just, I think there's a little bit of confusion of what can be done in an R1 as well as an R2. And R1, even though the average possibly is 5,000, up to 7,000, or whatever that is, there still can be smaller houses built on larger plats. And so, my concern is that you can drive around North Platt and see properties with larger plats, but they still have a small house, and they have a lot of land, and what do they fill with it? They fill piles of collectibles, cars that might not work anymore, trees that might, you know, not be removed yet, different things that actually are not as aesthetic to the property like some of them are referring to. So things to consider, that there does not have to be a 3,000-square-foot home built in an R1 district. As well as, if you look at the map of North Platt, there is a lot of R2 in our community, and a lot of subdivisions that have built. And people don't see it as subdivisions, because they drive down these streets, and, I mean, the houses kind of look the same because they were built in the same era. But there are subdivisions that were created, and a lot of the houses that we've researched fall under some of the houses that Lonnie Parsons and Dancer Properties has projected. And if you actually see some of the drawings, which I know some of you have seen stuff, and we're not to even some of those stages with the subdivision and the TIF and all of that, I mean, honestly, he can do a lot of different things at this point. And I'm concerned that if we don't move forward and make this happen with Lonnie, then another developer could come in and do some things that are out of our control, and you guys don't really even have a say in it, because it meets code, it meets R1 subdivision regulations, everything, and you wouldn't even be able to hear from these people. And I personally know the quality of construction that Lonnie Parsons does, because my husband has been involved with him on every project in this community.
30 seconds.
And so I want you to know, if you look at everything that he's done, it's quality. Our employers and our employees for this community are living in those houses that he's built. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hold it, hold it. May I?
Sure.
With all due respect, lots of us live in small homes. I live in a 1,200-square-foot home on West A Street, and I have an enormous yard, it's a corner lot.
Right.
I don't trash up my lawn. I don't trash up my place with a bunch of junk and cars. I park my vehicles in the garage. And so I think you're cutting with a pretty white brush when you make a comment like that.
Well, I'm really sorry if I offended you. I don't want to offend you.
I think you've offended a lot of people.
Well, thank you. I'm think, I'm totally glad that you called me out on that, but I'm sorry, there's a lot of people that have accused Lonnie and others of building crap housing as well, and that's not what Lonnie does. So I'm here to just tell you, I mean, I'm standing up for what this development can be for this community, and I'm totally, I'm glad that you called me out on that.
Well, thank you for responding.
Thank you.
I'll be very brief. Rich Thompson, 803 Clearwater Court. I just wanted to ask the audience by a show of hands, who is opposed to this project? That's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Lori Evans, 811 Clearwater Court. A picture is worth 1,000 words, so I have pictures for you.
Our concern is not that the houses will be poor quality. Our concern is the number of houses that Lonnie Parsons wants to put on this lot, and we've been told, and it's been in the newspaper, 41 houses. So if you'll notice, on the front of this, I've outlined the lot that we're talking about, and outlined Clearwater Court and Crane Court. And you can see, and you can, you can even slide it over and put it over the top of Clearwater Court and Crane Court, there are 22 structures on, total, on Crane Court and Clearwater Court in the same amount of space. And then if you say, "Well, the lots are going to be smaller," then turn the map over and look at the houses that are on Stewart and Bear. Notice, again, I've outlined the lot in question. You can pull this out and put it over the top of Stewart, all the way to Bear, and you will notice that on the east side of Bear, only half of the houses fit into that area. So if you count the full houses, there are 21 houses. If you say, "Okay, well, the lots are going to be even smaller than that," I'll give you those six houses on the east side of Bear, and that's a total of 28 houses on smaller lots in that same amount of area where he wants to put 41 houses. That's our big concern, is the size of, or the number of houses that want, that Lonnie Parsons wants to put in this small area. When you talk about eight acres, you think, "Oh, well, that's a lot of land," but when you look at it, it's not. It's not a lot of land, and that's what I, I think most of us here are concerned about, is putting that many houses in that small of an area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Fiona Libsack. I live at 3320 Sunset Drive in North Platt. I'm also representing the hospital, who has stood before you for the last two years, letting you know that we have an issue with housing in our community, and we know this because our employer, our employees tell us that we do. In the last 10 years, we've recruited over 300 new employees to this community. Those 300 people have all looked for homes. Some have been successful, and some have caused us turnover at the hospital because they cannot find homes. So we're telling you we have a problem, and we're not kidding. We really do. I heard back here that there's an issue about how many houses. Honestly, if they put two houses up, we'd be ahead, right? So I think we still have an opportunity to talk about how many houses we can have. That's the process. We go through the process. We talk about all of, all of the things. We talk about, you know, what their streets are going to look like, how many houses, how big they're going to be, all of that, all that, we still have time to talk about. What we're asking for tonight is rezoning so that we can have discussion to talk about that. If we shut the conversation down now, well, we'll have no houses, right? I think it's easy to talk about, not in my backyard, a lot of communities go through this, but at the end of the day, if we're going to grow this community and let the employers grow to the point that they can, we're going to have to start listening to some of these housing conversations and open the doors for developers to develop. And that's all we're asking for tonight.
Thank you. Would you state your name, sir, please?
Weston Andre Hen, 3602 Edna Court.
I apologize. What was your last name?
Andre Hen is the last name.
You'll have to spell that one.
A-N-D-R-E hyphen H-E-N-N.
Thank you.
And 3602 Edna Court. My question was, did I understand that the council voted to just go for two readings and not the third?
No, we have three readings.
Oh, okay. I wasn't quite sure. It quickly showed up there and went off, and so I have that. Excuse me. I'm here to urge you to not vote for this change of rezoning. We have lived in our home for 22 years. We have seen the area around our home developed, and have looked favorably upon that. The homes and nursing homes are nice and very well-maintained. We bought our home in this area because of the neighborhood. What is being proposed here is not fair to the homeowners in this area. All around us is R1 zoning, and nice homes on nice-sized lots. A development of 38 homes, I've heard it went down to 38 now, on small lots in this little area will certainly stick out. Yes, I believe this would lower our property taxes, or our value of our surrounding homes. Our neighbors and us have been paying taxes for years. I believe one of the duties of the city council is to listen to the citizens that they represent. I haven't heard many in favor of this on this lot. In fact, most of what I hear is against it. I also feel members of the city council should look after the welfare of its citizens. I think you, as a city council, need to look after the interests of those who have been paying taxes to the city for many years. I urge you to please vote no on this zoning change.
Thank you.
Terry Sigler, 3420 West F Street. I was wondering why there wasn't a study done, an engineering study, on the impact of this many houses and traffic up there, along with what's going to happen between West A Street and Second. Also, having that many houses, the plans have changed. For the third time, we're not sure what was, what's happening. Also, I would wish that the people that'd like to come in and develop this property would have talked to the homeowners. At least let them have their impact, and maybe we wouldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
My name is Chris Jong. I'm an independent practitioner of obstetrics and gynecologists in this town. I've lived here for 24 years. I do not represent the hospital. I do not work for the hospital. I agree that we do need residential areas for prospective employees of the hospital to reside in, and it is a detriment not to have these housing available for these people to be employed. However, the hospital does own quite a bit of land around its building. So if they're really interested in building, maybe they should open up their property around it, rezone it, and build property on it. My second question is, and I don't know if this proceedings allows for questions and answers back and forth, but I will pose a question to the council, which is, I need to understand how the idea of TIF, as I understand, was founded in the state, as other states have done, that generally it allows for development of blighted property. I would like to understand the basis behind the blighted designation of this property, because to me, it does not appear blighted, far from it.
I would prefer that we set a meeting with you at some time in the future, and we'd be happy to sit down and explain TIF, because it's somewhat complicated, and I don't think we'll have the time tonight to explain that to your satisfaction, I would guess. So if you'd be so kind, at some time in the future, we'd be happy to sit down and speak with you and let you know all about TIF. And quite honestly, it has nothing to do with tonight's procedure, so.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you.
We will talk to you. Jim?
If they're finished.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, thank you.
I would like to speak to this. You know, from all I've heard, Lonnie Parsons is a good builder, builds quality housing, or is capable of building high-quality housing. I think that Gary Person is trying to accommodate a need that I recognize as being a real need, and that is for type housing that is proposed. I, I think it, I think he's right when he says that these houses would fit that definition of housing that seems to be much in demand right now. You know, now having said that, it seems to me that the original planners had good reasons for making that R1 out there. And I think our current planners, hearts are in the right place. I think they're trying to accommodate a need that some see for that type of housing, and I respect that. Now, I think, I think that sometimes where we go wrong is when we get thinking that we're smarter than the people that we're supposed to represent. I don't know if that's applicable to this discussion or not. Maybe not. Nevertheless, I really think we ought to leave this R1, because that R1 most nearly fits the F, what's already out there. And I sympathize with people in terms of loss of property values and these other issues about safety that were mentioned earlier in this whole discussion. Dixie's in deplorable condition, and I think that we need to do something about Dixie. And I would like to see houses built on that property, but frankly, there's eight acres there, and if we put as many houses on that as what is being proposed, those folks that buy those houses aren't even going to need a lawnmower. There's too many houses on that piece of property. Just by opinion, what it's worth, and I can't support, I can't support rezoning that to R2.
So I just wanted to address one thing on here. When they talked about the size of houses, so I did some research this week to find out what size of houses can be put in R1, what can be put in R2, and R3, and so on again, because, you know, I have to be refreshed on that, because it changes and it gets big. And R1 does not protect you from house size. I just want to make sure that that's clear, so that way everybody understands that R1, by city code and building codes, you could put a 140-square-foot house inside that lot. All it does is changes the lot sizes. So, you know, I understand your arguments with the lot sizes and that kind of thing, but that does not protect you from things that would involve, like, house size. You could put a micro house on those, on a lot out there if you wanted to. You could buy that whole thing and put a micro house on it if you wanted to. And that would impact your property taxes significantly, having something like that on there, I would imagine. But in terms of the house sizes, I just wanted to say, I don't think that this will protect you very well, because of, it does cap the massive size that could be on there possibly, but we'll be able to discuss that if we go forward with this at future meetings, so.
Yes, sir.
I retired from the practice of law 40 years, and I thought the tough decisions were behind me, but that's not true. This is really a difficult issue. This is really a difficult issue, and I want to explain to the people out there that I am very sensitive to what's going on. When you're sitting up here, we have to try to be objective. We have to try to get an issue of fairness. And here, the problem I'm seeing here that's developed is we have a contractor who's making a proposal, and we really don't have an honest proposal on the table.
Thank you.
And I want to see that, and that, and all I'm suggesting to you is, I'm going to vote for the R2. Not that I think it's the greatest idea, but I want this thing on the table so you people can see what's going to go on, and they submit something that we can see and make a legitimate decision on this. And I, and I'm just telling you, I don't think it's fair to have to put the mayor in the position of having to break a tie. I think that we need to move this on. And I know, this is one of those deals, you make a decision, and you can hate me, I apologize, but I want to get this on, and I want it presented, because we can't, you know, the issue is development. We can't just stop a project at this stage without giving someone the opportunity to make a presentation on the best they can do. Just like with you folks, the mayor gave you an opportunity, if you wanted to object and voice your opinion, the same thing has to apply to the contractor. He has to have a right to submit a proposal, and that's why I'm changing it. I apologize. I love you people, and I hope you can still shake my hand, but that's why I'm making my decision tonight, and this is only the second time. So there's going to be one more reading and one more vote.
Why didn't he present what he wanted? Why didn't he present the proposals beginning with?
Well, you know.
Ma'am, ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Jane, Jane, you're right, but what I'm trying to say is, legally, I want him to put a proposal to the planning commission that we can see, and then we up or down it, and that's the end of it. That's what I'm trying to say.
Ma'am, there is a process that we follow. There is a process that we follow, and this is the process that we need to go through in order to get to the point where we can, where he can bring forward what he expects to do. We have to go through this portion first, and then there's plenty more talks. There's going to be plenty more talks on this, and at any point in time, this thing can be tossed out the door. But I think, and I would be with Mr. Missley, that we at least should have the opportunity to see what he has to say, so. But thank you, I mean, really, I do appreciate what you're saying.
And I want to hear from you guys. That's, I'm not shutting anything off, I'm just telling you.
Yes, sir.
One quick comment.
Sure.
Fiona hit it on the head. Yeah, we need houses in North Platte. We've admitted that numerous times, we need housing. But you and myself have had the conversation, had conversations with the pre owners. I mean, I see a few here. I've had conversations with a lot of people in this town. It's not just housing we need, it's affordable, quality housing. And a plethora of quarter-million-dollar houses getting thrown on the market at once is not what we need right now for this community. Not everybody that lives in this community makes the kind of money to make an $1,800 a month escrow payment. I'm sorry, they don't. Most banks will not give you more than 40% debt-to-income ratio, and at an $1,800 a month house payment, you got to be bringing home more than $4,000 a month. There's not a lot of jobs here that pay that. I work at one of the highest-paying jobs in this community, and I do not bring that home. I know that for a fact, because I'm trying to buy a house right now, and in this market, to find something quality that the VA will approve, it's not out there in that price range. It's not. And the shot-in-the-arm idea of, "We'll build quarter-million-dollar houses, and people that own the $130,000 houses will sell theirs to buy that quarter-million-dollar house," I'm sorry, that's a pipe dream, in my opinion, because somebody that's retired and living on a limited income is not going to give up the home that is paid off for a new mortgage at double the value. So Lonny, it's nothing personal. I just feel that these houses, this many, at this price value, is not what we need at this time.
I voted against this last time, and I intend to vote against it tonight. And I'm going to tell you, now, just wait a minute. I'm going to tell you why. I have spent the last 16 years involved with an organization that has built houses on 44- and 50-foot lots, and I can tell you, it'll be darn tough to build a 1,600-square-foot house with a two-car garage on a 50-foot lot. Now Lonny may have this figured out, but he's, he's got about, what, 28 50-foot lots out of that 40, 41 houses. And I think he needs to take a long, hard look at this, and I think if this thing passes tonight, I would challenge Lonny to come before the council, not before the council, but present the information to the council in our packet so that we can see exactly what you intend to do with that, because 50-foot lots, in my opinion, are not practical.
And the motion passes, 5-3. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Item number six. Second reading, action on ordinance number 4,004,000, to adopt recommendation by the North Platte Planning Commission regarding vacating Gosnell Estates, first replat of Block 3, Gosnell Estates, first subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Yes, please.
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, vacating an existing subdivision plat, creating Gosnell Estates, first replat of Block 3, Gosnell Estates, first subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and the publication thereof.
Move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 4,000, to adopt recommendation by the North Platte Planning Commission regarding vacating Gosnell Estates, first replat of Block 3, Gosnell Estates, first subdivision, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
So it's 8-0, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Item number seven. Consider request for extension of CDBG 16-H0-33066, owner-occupied rehabilitation grant contract to extend the contract end date to December 15, 2019, and authorize submission of the request for extension of the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. That's N-E-D-E-D.
Move that we consider request for extension of CDBG 16-HO-33066, owner-occupied rehabilitation grant contract to extend the contract end date to December 15, 2019, and authorize submission of the request for extension to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development.
Second.
I need to abstain.
Okay. Item number eight. Adopt resolution setting user fees for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Move that we adopt resolution setting user fees for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Second.
And that motion passes. Item number nine. Action on ordinance number 4,001, salaries for fiscal year 2018-2019.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, adopting a position classification plan for all city positions and allocating the several city positions to classes in the classification plan. Repelling ordinance number 3973 and other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof in pamphlet form.
Move that we suspend the rules requiring three separate readings on ordinance number 4,001.
Second.
Move that we adopt ordinance number 4,001, salaries for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Second.
And that motion passes. Item number 10. Approve collective bargaining agreement between the city of North Platte and North Platte Police Employees Association Fraternal Order of Police, number 33.
Move that we approve collective bargaining agreement between the city of North Platte and North Platte Police Employees Association Fraternal Order of Police, number 33.
Second.
And that motion passes as well. Item number 11. Approve collective bargaining agreement between the city of North Platte and International Association of Firefighters, Local 831, AFL-CIO.
Move that we approve collective bargaining agreement between the city of North Platte and International Association of Firefighters, Local 831, AFL-CIO.
Item number 12. Approve and authorize mayor to execute the following agreements. Dispatch agreement with Lincoln County, maintenance of city roads by Lincoln County, excuse me, maintenance of county roads by city, dispatch agreement with Gothenburg, resource officer agreement with Lincoln County School District 001, Lincoln County City Emergency Management Agreement, and agreement for ambulance dispatch services with Priority Medical Transport LLC.
Move that we authorize the mayor to accept the following agreements. Dispatch agreement with Lincoln County, maintenance of city roads by Lincoln County, maintenance of county roads by city, dispatch agreement with Gothenburg, resource officer agreement with Lincoln County School District Number 1, Lincoln County City Emergency Management Agreement, and agreements for ambulance dispatch services with Priority Medical Transport LLC.
Second.
And that motion passes. Item number 13. Adopt resolution providing the designation of Nebraska Land National Bank as a warrant lender, authorizing the execution and delivery of warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender, and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing.
Move that we adopt resolution providing for the designation of Nebraska Land National Bank as a warrant lender, authorizing the execution and delivery of a warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender, and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing.
Second.
Item number 14. Adopt resolution approving claims and authorize the issuance of warrant to Western Engineering CEO in the amount of $1,243,622.27, and 11 warrants to Nebraska Land National Bank totaling $1,770,78.89 to pay approved claims, and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May 21, 2013.
Move that we adopt resolution approving claims and authorizing the issuance of a warrant to Western Engineering Company in the amount of $1,243,622.27, and 11 warrants to Nebraska Land National Bank totaling $1,770,78.89 to pay approved claims, and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May 21, 2013.
Second.
And that motion passes as well. And item number 15, claims.
Move that we pay the claims.
Second.
Larry.
Larry, oh, hey, we'll have to vote over there.
Do I pay bills still?
Houses.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.